That they made good and sound decisions. I also pray for those who have lost their lives and for the damage and destruction that has been done in central Texas as we continue to try and make them whole again. Thank you.
Amen.
It's okay.
I was going to say, please just to reply, of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Item four, roll call, city clerk.
Airborne. Any questions for Nidus? Councilmember McAdams?
Here.
Councilmember Holmes?
Here.
Councilmember Gray?
Here.
I'd like to welcome everybody to tonight's meeting. Item six, do we have any reports?
No, sir.
No reports? Mr. Lofton?
So the first thing I'd like to do is I'd like to talk about blunts and stuff that we're experiencing in central Texas. And the DFW has, we are collecting items. We've put that information out there, both on our Facebook page and through texts and phone calls to all the DRS who are doing that. Throughout our whole district, we are collecting things from DFW 4820. In fact, that's where I just came from, is picking up some stuff and dropping it off. We're just a lot of normal things, it's going to be gloves, weed eaters, things that the actual first responders can use. And then we have a hub at the DFW post 1806 in Beaumont, and they're going to be open from eight to five all this week to receive items. And I would ask that if you heard it here, that you let them know because we have metrics that we have to follow in our business and community service numbers and stuff. They don't need to get all credit if y'all give them a half million dollars. I'm just saying, it might happen. But with that in mind, we are out there working towards that. Also, I was out of town at training on the Thursday during our regular meeting, but we did get a motion passed and our post donated $500 towards that effort as well as the actual physical items. So that's all I have to say about that, and you can get with the afterwards if you want to ask more questions. So also, I want to talk about the Korean War Armistice, and I'm going to give you the short version since I had to add some more stuff in this evening. July 27th will mark the 72nd year of the Korean, the signing of the Korean War Armistice Agreement. And it was signed on July 27, 1953 in the village of Poonron Jong. So, and that stopped three years of warfighting, and a lot of us don't know a lot about that, but when you consider that 5.8 million people served there and that $36,000 of the people were killed and over 110,000 wounded, then it matters, and then one of the things that the Defense of the World Wars does is we keep those memories and experiences alive. War broke out on the 38th of June of 1950 in the United States and everything, and other United Nations member nations sent church to support South Korea. And their resolve was tested in places like Porkchop Hill, Heartbreak Ridge, there's shows on Reservoir and other places that were only known by grid coordinates, you know, by people who were fighting there. But today in our nation's capital, there's a granite wall that's known as the Korean War Veterans Memorial, and it stands as a testament to their sacrifice, etched with the words "Freedom is not free", which is why I'm here, because I want to make sure y'all don't forget that. It's, we live in a time where sometimes people do. Today, our armed forces continue to proudly serve side by side with our Korean War counterparts. In fact, our senior vice commander, Peter Martinez, did serve in Korea. And a lot of people think, well, why is that a combat rhythm? Because it's still going on. Things happen over there all the time. And it provides a vigil for peace and stability in both Asia and the rest of the world. So we just wanted to make sure y'all do that this evening, and that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. I've been messing with your job for you, sir.
Item seven, citizen comments. Any citizen comments to anybody out in Holly? Item number eight, deliberate an act to approve the minutes of the June 23, 2025 city council meeting?
Make motion to deliberate an act to approve the minutes of June 23, 2025 city council meeting.
Yes, sir.
I think Ray got you that time. You have a motion and a second to deliberate an act to approve the minutes of the June 23, 2025 city council meeting. Do I have any questions? No questions, vote on the motion. Mayor votes aye, Mayor pro Tim Kenedys. Councilmember Holmes? Councilmember Gay? Councilmember McAdams? Motion passed. Item number nine, deliberate an act on resolution 2025-07, adopting the procurement policies and procedures in the 2 CFR 200.317, 2 CFR 200.327, and appendix two to supplement the City of Grove's purchasing policy.
Make motion, we deliberate an act on resolution.
I have a motion and a second to deliberate an act on resolution 2025-07. On the question, Mr. Carruth.
Mayor Castle, first I apologize. It's happening. Projected on the screen that downloaded something wrong, let's try to bring it out this time. Moving version. Well, no. Say that, I thought that.
We're thinking.
This resolution is required so that we are, we can accept federal grants. The federal procurement regulations are required for us to follow. And this is just, we don't have to do it. If we want to accept the money from the federal government, we have to observe the policies. And it's not too much different from what we're doing.
Was this a change in their procedures that required this?
No, sir, we had not adopted it in the past.
Okay. So Mr. Carruth, these slight changes, does that require any outside assistance beyond what we normally need for procurement services?
No, sir. For the federal grants that we have, where we're using the grant consultant, the consultant will do the paperwork end of it, but in terms of our internal purchasing processes, that will, we don't need additional assistance with that.
Anybody else, any other questions? No other questions, vote on the motions. Mayor votes aye, Mayor pro Tim Kenedys. Councilmember Holmes? Councilmember Gay? Councilmember McAdams? Motion passed. Item 10, deliberate an act on the July 14, 2025 invoice list?
14, 2025 invoice list?
Second that.
A motion and a second, deliberate an act on the July 14, 2025 invoice list. On the question? True.
Very good size invoice list tonight. First one is the Citibank for our P cards, $13,583.39. City of Port Arthur for landfill of our sledge, $5,525. Overland Supply for push camera, this is silicon video, sewer lines, $7,020. GFL Environmental Sledge, the water, de-watering. But the Mount Press of the wastewater plant, $93,403.57. Jefferson County Praise District, third quarter, we, a third quarter payment, $18,867.92. LVA for our raw water, $27,600. Moody Brothers Wizard, $4,000 visual weight indicators, $7,315. Like that's at the water plant. VSDX chlorine and SO2 for wastewater plant, disinfection, $9,646.20. Texas Works to Vehicle Solutions accessory installation for two patrol vehicles, $5,500. Texas Regional Title, these are for title searches that were done for the codes hearings, demolition buildings, $9,000. Texas Pack and Load, wire harnesses for replacement of the garbage truck, $6,246.35. Two for Tress, this high service pump number one rebuilt, and high service pump number two, replacement motor. One is $5,500, the second one is $9,097.92. And lastly, West Bank Fuel for the fleet, $14,340.11. Grand total is $232,625.26.
Any questions?
The high service pump is that for wastewater or just water pump?
The push camera, is that, was that a budgeted item or?
No, it wasn't. Actually, we were, we ended up running across, we were, we were operating our other camera had, it was, it was giving us more and more problems. They wanted to put more money into it. This particular camera, actually one of, it was on a sale item, and we were actually able to get a located one for, uh, free, then we purchased the camera. We've used it so far, we've been able to tie it in with our cell phones and it's worked really well. It's more of a backpack unit also, so we can carry it inside the truck, not in the back of the pickup truck. So it's, it's, it's bad for the user today.
The other one didn't have a one, did it?
I know. There was also after price as well. Yeah, about after price, yeah.
On the title search? Is that a, is that a normal?
I don't know.
Do you own title search?
No.
Online?
We needed to do that to make certain that all potential interests on the properties were notified, but we were about to take action.
Of course, some of those grant funds too, brother. Part of that.
Well, yeah, part and heart of it. Well, all the first $100,000 of this demolition project will be paid for through our proposed.
Of the sledge de-watering? Are any of the repairs that we're going to do to the sewer plant, is that, is that going to help with that cost? Is that something that's going to continue to have to be done even after we make some repairs?
Yes, suds, and I always have, they always have to, they have to, that comes from the water plant, also it's coming from the waste that's actually in the water.
Okay.
And we are about to change vendors on the, on the on the garbage on the hauler. Around sales about $7,800 or more.
Then my last for the, the wax, does that, the fuel managers, or for the wax bank, sorry, does that include diesel as well?
Yes.
Yes. Any other questions? No other questions, vote on the motion. Mayor votes aye, Mayor pro Tim Kenedys. Councilmember Holmes? Councilmember Gay? Councilmember McAdams? Motion passes. Item 11, city council will hold an executive session pursuant to the provisions of chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in section 551.072, deliberation regarding real property.